We will call the meeting of the Gloucester City Council for Tuesday, June 12th, to order. And this meeting is being recorded by video and audio in accordance with the state open meeting law. We will have a flag salute and a moment of silence. Councillor O'Hara, would you lead the flag salute, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councillor Cox, will you dedicate the moment of silence?
The moment of silence is for Barbara Todd. She passed away this week. She was the wife of poet laureate and a valued person in the community. We will miss you.
Madam Clerk, please call the first order of business.
First order of business is oral communications.
The public shall have the opportunity at every regularly scheduled meeting to be heard under oral communication on matters not appearing on the agenda. Oral communication shall allow any resident who has a request or complaint of any nature relative to city business to appear before the council, state their problem without debate, and the matter shall be referred to the proper agency through the office of the mayor. The resident will be notified within a two-week period relative to the disposition of same, and a copy shall be forwarded to the city council. Persons speaking under oral communication shall be limited to three minutes each, and the council president shall not allow complaints as to individual performance. So, having said all that, is there anyone here who wishes to address the council on oral communications? Okay. Thank you. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, next order of business.
The next order of business is confirmation of new appointments. The Fisheries Commission, Michael Orlando, term to expire 2/14/21. And the Zoning Board of Appeals, Christopher Howard, fulfilling the term of Francis Wright, term to expire 2/14/20.
Vice President LeBlanc?
Yes. As Joanne said, we have two appointments tonight. The first is Michael Orlando. Ordinance Administration voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the city council appoint Michael Orlando to the Fisheries Commission, term to expire 2/14/21, and I so move. So, Michael, how are you?
Doing good.
Doing good. So, Michael's been a member, he's been in the fishing industry his whole life. He's worked different, has worked different jobs and worked his way up into a local seafood business, and he's helped that business grow quite a bit during his time working for them. So, he knows the, you know, both sides of the fishing industry.
Great. Thank you very much. This is a voice vote, so all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Michael, thank you for your service. We appreciate it.
The next one is Christopher Howard for the Zoning Board of Appeals. Ordinance Administration voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the city council appoint Christopher Howard to the Zoning Board of Appeals, term to expire 2/14/20, and I so move.
Second.
So, Mr. Howard is an alternate, and he is being appointed as a full member, and we told him that he didn't have to show up tonight because he's already been before the council, before.
Okay. Great. Simple majority. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed. Thank you. Next item of business. Madam Clerk.
Next item is the consent agenda.
Any councillors wish to pull any matter off the consent agenda? Okay. Councillor Gilman?
Yes, thank you, councillor. I would like to remove communications invitations, letter from councillor Holmgren to city council regarding the informational brochure for dog owners.
Thank you. Any others? Okay, with that exception, we'll accept the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Councillor Gilman?
I just wanted to shout out to both Francesca Hillier Combs for her creative brochure and also for Linda Brayton for her oversight in developing that, and for councillor-at-large Holmgren for bringing this to the Animal Advisory Board and getting everybody to see it and understand it. And we had started something about four years ago, and we never got it together, and this is excellent. It's so helpful for all of us as dog owners in the community, and I just felt that it needed a little bit of extra recognition. So, thank you, Francesca, Linda, and Jen, for job well done. So, I would like to move that we accept this in the consent agenda. Give me some.
Okay. Then it's a simple majority. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Madam Clerk, next order of business, please.
The next order is the unanimous consent calendar.
Okay. Do we have a consent calendar?
Yeah. It was sent to you.
Oh, sure. Yes. Okay, this is for the, yep, Community Development Director RE, Community Development Block Grant and Home Funds. So, we're just accepting that memo and referring to B and F. So, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Thank you. Okay, now, next.
Next item is the Budget and Finance Committee Report of June 7th.
Councillor Cox. This is the easy part, Councillor Cox.
You guys are gonna be so secretary of my voice. Good evening, everybody. Budget and Finance voted unanimously to recommend that the city council approve special budgetary transfer 2018 SBT 15 in the amount of $12,000 from account as noted, police criminal investigation salaries to account as noted, police uniform purchase of services for the purpose of funding invoices for management consulting services through June 30th, 2018, and I so move. This is a transfer to pay an invoice for a police department outside consultant for internal affairs whom they hire. This is a personnel issue.
Thank you. This is a budgetary transfer, just requires a special, just a simple majority. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed. Thank you. Next.
Budget and Finance voted unanimously to recommend that the city council accept, under Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, a grant from the Massachusetts State Historical Records Advisory Board through the Massachusetts Secretary of State Office in the amount of $6,326 for the purpose of the city-owned Cemetery Advisory Committee preservation of veterans' headstones in First Parish Burial Ground and Clark Cemetery at 122R Centennial Avenue, and I so move.
Second.
This one's pretty straightforward. It's just a grant in order to restore headstones at the cemeteries. Noted.
Okay. Simple majority. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Thank you. Next.
Budget and Finance voted unanimously to recommend that the city council, under Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, to accept a donation of up to $674 from the Daughters of the American Revolution, the Gloucester Fund, and Awesome Gloucester Foundation for the purpose of the city-owned Cemetery Advisory Committee preservation of veterans' headstones in First Parish Burial Ground and Clark Cemetery at 122R Centennial Avenue, and I so move.
Second.
Moved and seconded. The commentary?
Same thing.
Okay. Great. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Next.
Budget and Finance voted unanimously to recommend that the city council accept, under Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, a state grant from the Massachusetts Cultural Council in the amount of $7,600 to the Gloucester Cultural Council for the purpose of supporting FY18 local cultural projects in the city of Gloucester by the Gloucester Cultural Council, and I so move.
Second.
This is an annual grant acceptance for the city's cultural council, and it's my understanding that they will be split evenly between the two districts.
Okay. Any other questions? It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Thank you. Next item.
Budget and Finance voted unanimously to recommend that the city council approve 2018 SA 32 in the amount of $30,848 from Waterways Enterprise Fund Undesignated Fund Balance Retained Earnings Account as noted to Waterways Enterprise Stabilization Fund as noted for reserving said funds for future purposes of the Waterways Enterprise Fund, and I so move.
Second.
Commentary?
This appropriation is taking the remainder of the Waterways Enterprise retained earnings free cash and moving it into a stabilization fund for use should there be any emergencies that arise. The harbor master can request transfer of the funds through the supplemental appropriation. This action will make the funds available despite the turnover of the new fiscal year with the council approval.
Thank you. Again, this is, oh, this is a roll call vote. Yes. So, then we'll take the roll call vote.
Councillor Cox?
Yes.
Councillor Gilman?
Yes.
Councillor Heck?
Yes.
Councillor Holmgren?
Yes.
Councillor LeBlanc?
Yes.
Councillor Lumber?
Yes.
Councillor Memhardt?
Yes.
Councillor Nolan?
Yes.
Councillor O'Hara?
Yes.
Supplemental appropriation number 2018 SA 32 in the amount of $30,848 to the specified accounts passes on a motion of nine to zero.
Thank you. Next item. Councillor Cox?
Budget and Finance voted unanimously. Sorry about that. Budget and Finance voted unanimously to recommend that the city council approve special budgetary transfer 2018 SBT 16 in the amount of $32,000 from account as noted, management information systems salaries to account as noted, veterans' benefits, ordinary benefits for the purpose of funding veterans' benefits through June 30th, 2018, and I so move.
Second.
The CFO advised the Budget and Finance Committee that for several years the city has had to appropriate further funding for veterans' benefits, which points to the success of the city's veteran service programs. The projection for the total required to balance spending for the year is $32,000. The amount is available in the management information system salary line due to a lag in filling a budgeted position. The state reimburses the city for 75% of the expenses a year in the rear.
Thank you. Moved and seconded. This requires a roll call? No roll call. Okay. Simple majority. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Councillor Cox, is that, this, for this part of your duties tonight?
Yes.
Thank you.
I will be speaking for about another hour and a little bit.
Yeah, we know that. We can't wait. Madam Clerk, next order of business, please.
The next order of business is the Plan and Development Standing Committee Report of May 2nd, 2018, and 6/6/2018.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Councillor Gilman?
So, the P and D Standing Committee voted two in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the city council pursuant to GCO Section 2-3, Section 2, Part D, grant to National Grid a perpetual right and easement to install, construct, reconstruct, repair, replace, add to, maintain, and operate for the transmission of high and low voltage electric current and for the transmission of intelligence in underground electric distribution system consisting of lines of buried wires and cables and lines of wires and cables installed in underground conduits together with all equipment and appurtenances located in, through, under, over, across, and upon a parcel of land situated on the easterly and westerly sides of Howe Avenue, a portion of which is known as Number 24, and is shown in a plan entitled "Easement, City of Gloucester, 24 Howe Avenue." City of... I actually asked someone for an interpretation. I was told "How," but I won't say who that person was. I'm gonna say Huff Avenue, 24 Huff Avenue, City of Gloucester, Mass. WR Number 23830938 dated August 17th, 2015, and as described in the easement submitted with National Grid's request for disposition of said easement for a nominal fee of $1. National Grid shall record the easement at the Southern Essex County Registry of Deeds and shall pay all costs to do so, including providing copies to the city of Gloucester, and I so move.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any commentary on this? Or is it pretty routine?
No, I think it's pretty...
Pretty self-explanatory.
Pretty obvious, yep.
This is a simple majority. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next order of business.
Next order of business is the public hearing 2018-059, special city council permit 2017-12, Schoolhouse Road Number 2, Number 3, Number 4, MAP 262, lots 14 and 37, and Gloucester Crossing Road Number 7, MAP 43, lots 4 and 5, for a special permit under the mixed-use overlay district pursuant to Gloucester zoning ordinance Section 5.29, including major project Gloucester zoning ordinance Section 5.7, and Section 5.2910 and 5.118.
Thank you. We will open the public hearing and continue it until June 26th, 2018. Madam Clerk, next order of business.
Next public hearing is 2018-016, local adoption of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, DEP Division of Air Quality and Control Policy Noise Regulation, parentheses 310 CMR 7.10, and amend Gloucester Code of Ordinances, Chapter 13, Noise.
We'll open the public hearing. We will continue it until June 26th. But I wanted to ask Councillor Memhardt, councillor, was there some updates to this matter that we want, you want to put into the record now, or shall we wait until the next public hearing?
I can just give a brief update. I know folks from 159 East Main Street, Nick, welcome, are here this evening on a related matter permitting for explosives and ammonia. They have been working very carefully and thoroughly with our building department. They've made a number of improvements relating to this, the sound that's coming from the facility. According to the building inspector today, they've achieved compliance with our ordinance as to almost all guidelines with the exception of nighttime noise impacting residential properties in the zone. And that's, it's a lot of progress.
We're not quite there yet, but we are making progress, and the folks there, Nick and his
crew, are to be commended for the efforts that they've made and the resources they've committed.
Good. Well, that's great, and thank you very much to the, to that, the owners of that facility for doing that. So, we'll just continue this till next time and see if we can't, you know, find a final solution to the noise part of this. So, this is continued until June 26th, 2018. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Next order of business is public hearing 2018-029, the application of NSDJ Real Estate LLC for the storage of ammonia, gas, and oil at 159 East Main Street, assessors MAP 63 Lot 26, per Mass General Law, Chapter 148, Section 13, and Gloucester Code of Ordinances, Chapter 8, Section 8.1, license for storing inflammables.
Thank you. So, I, this is a public hearing, and I will open the public hearing and ask anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this application to please approach the podium and give your name and address.
Hi, Nick Osgood with NSDJ Real Estate, owner of the property 159 East Main Street. We put this request in front of you because we are new owners, and it was acquired as code. Met with the fire department, did our part as far as a signature review, filed a document according to what we have done on the site for years. There's been no change in the use. There's been no change in the volumes of materials that are in that application as opposed to what's been over the years in the prior ownership with AmeriCold. So, it's really just more of a transfer than, you know, it's not a transfer, but it has the appearance of a transfer based upon our ownership. We would ask that the board approve it and that the hearing, we hear people's vantage points and understand where they're coming from as far as, you know, objections or, you know, positive feelings on the situation. But as far as we're concerned, there's no change in business. I mean, it's business as usual for us at that location, and I would defer to National Fish to really talk about how instrumental this is to their operation. The coal storage facility can't operate without ammonia. It's been like that since the day it was built, from my understanding, and it's been like that since the '60s. So, we would ask to continue it for the benefit of the business and for the benefit of the community, for the jobs, sustainability, and to keep supporting the other businesses. That coal storage facility not only supports National Fish, but numerous other businesses here in the community that store their finished goods and their pre-prepped goods for production in the processing center. So, it services a multitude of businesses.
Thank you very much, Nick. Anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of this application? Thank you. State your name and address.
Good evening. Todd Provost, President, National Fish and Seafood. So, I just want to reiterate a lot of what Nick has already indicated, that it's a continuous use that we've been doing for several years. No expansion of any of those, you know, liquids or chemicals or flammables, if you will, and it's critical to our business, critical to what we do. It is part of the finishing of the line, and it's part of storing our raw material as well as storing our finished goods. And, you know, that's part of the significant component of what supports the entire business is the ability to, you know, manage these goods.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Okay, is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition?
My hearing isn't all that great, so...
Did you identify yourself? Name and address, please.
The speakers are very muffled. My name is Benjamin Loyakno. I reside at 142 East Main Street, and I'm here in opposition to the permit for the ammonia gas storage across the street from our homes. I represent nine of our neighbors that live exactly across the street. I'm fully aware that these tanks are there, and they have been there. I'm also fully aware that it's an inherent danger in the storage of ammonia gas. I submitted a petition to the council outlining some of them. It's incumbent upon the town to be sure that these tanks are operative. If you so choose to grant the permit, the town would be just as responsible as the factory if there is a danger, if something happens to these tanks. So, I'm only here to admonish the town to please be sure that these tanks are safe. My neighbor has COPD, and she can't take much in bad air. So, I just, again, I'm here just to mention to the town that this is a very dangerous gas. It can cause very harmful effects to your nose, throat, eyes, skin, and it's incumbent upon the town and the factory to be sure that they're going to store these safely. I thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition to this application? Name and address, please.
My name is Michael Faity, and I'm the sole owner of a property that goes under the title of Reed's Wharf Marina, Inc. We are direct abutter to this property. I'm not here to speak in opposition to this application, but hopefully to get an answer that I was unable to get from other sources. As you are aware, before this application can come before you, there has to be a sign-off by the fire chief or the fire department. It's curious in the statute, it doesn't have to be positive. In this case, it is positive. But I was concerned about Chief Smith's recommendations. He said he approved it, and he says, "Recommendations to ensure annual inspections are scheduled and completed." Well, those are fire department responsibilities. So, I don't, it's, to me, it created some anxiety in my mind as to whether the inspections are being done and recorded, and when were they last tested? Because this seems to suggest that, give them the permit so that we can inspect, and that's not, that's not what the statute says. The statute says they must be inspected, and it is a fire department responsibility. So, my direct question is, how often are they tested, and when were they last tested? And then that would frame my opinion on what needs to be done in terms of the permit. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Okay, seeing none. Madam Clerk, any communications?
There was a petition from Mr. Ayakono and the abutters, which you all got distributed, and he spoke tonight.
Okay. So, the petition basically echoes what he said to us. Okay, great. All right. Any councillor questions as to the technicalities of this particular application? Councillor Cox?
I would like for the fire chief to clarify the inspection information, the question that was asked earlier. Thank you.
Yeah, good evening, council. The inspections themselves of their facilities and the tanks and the storage in particular, their operation, their engines that compress the gases, not, not an inspection as conducted by the fire department. We inspect their records to ensure that they're having outside vendors, third parties, come in and do the annual inspections that are required. They do have to provide to us the Tier 2 reporting, which they do annually, their emergency action plan, as well as their evacuation maps, all of which we have as the most current for those two plans, because they don't have to be redone every year. It was 2017, and the Tier 2 reports from this last year. So, we have on record everything that they're required to provide to us. You know, we've gone through the records, and they have had some minor leaks. They've reported those appropriately through the process with DEP, and we're satisfied that their operation and their maintenance is going the way it should. We don't really have any evidence to suggest that it is not, so there's, there's no way that we could not, you know, sign off on this. My comments on there are purely to remind them of their responsibilities, which our fire inspector does when he's out to do his inspections, is really a records review, not, not a physical inspection of their equipment. That's not, not our charge, not our responsibility, and not our expertise. So, that's, there's a difference between doing an inspection and checking their record-keeping to make sure that they've done their due diligence and what they're required to do under, under OSHA and DEP.
One more while he's present.
Go ahead.
And your department does training and emergency hazmat drills and stuff like that?
We do. We're, you know, in our position, you know, as first responders, we're not qualified as hazmat team or technicians. It's all a defensive operation from our perspective and, and where we fit into that whole response under federal guidelines and law as well as the state. So, for us, you know, we're required to do annual in-house training with them. We do that annually. We walk through the plant, see what changes that they've made. They typically have us over at least once or twice annually, and all three of the groups tour through the facility, see what's new, what's different. We always have, you know, new folks coming in that need to get that update and see how the operation is. And I just, I ran the reports earlier today, you know, since '99, which is as far back as my electronic records go, through today. They've had a total of five releases that I could find records for. Only three of those resulted in a response by us. Not every leak that a facility like this has reaches the threshold of a reportable incident or even something that they have to contact us for. But typically, if they have any kind of, you know, significant leak that would charge a room full of, you know, ammonia or even enough of the ammonia to set off their alarm system, it automatically transmits to us, so that's why we end up out there doing the reporting. So, they've only, the... So they've only, the biggest leak they've had was a 20-pound leak in the last several years, and they follow all the process and procedures to report that to DEP. So they've done what they're supposed to do, and I can't, you know, find fault with their operation to not recommend that this go forward.
Counselor Memhard.
Chief, you may be the person here, or perhaps Todd or Nick could add in, but the concern that I've heard expressed to me is on the behalf of the residential neighbors to the plant on East Main Street. When there is an ammonia leak, what the obligation is or what the protocol is for communicating with the neighborhood so that they are aware and informed about what happens and why it happens and what they need to do. Last summer, there was an off-premise leak which was detected by budding residential neighbors, and it was an unpleasant experience. You were notified, and you all came onto site. The question is, what is the protocol, and to what degree should the neighbors be informed where we have a situation where an industrial coal storage facility like this, a production facility, is in extremely close proximity to a dense residential and recreational neighborhood?
Yeah, in those situations, that would be action that we would take as emergency responders. If there was a leak that started to threaten the neighborhoods, their health and safety, there would be an evacuation order, shelter-in-place order. We'd use our, you know, rave system to do the callback and notify folks of what our instructions were based on where we think that plume, if there was a significant enough release. So if anybody has ever dealt with ammonia, whether it be in a bottle or, you know, in an industrial situation, a little goes a long way. So that odor carries a long distance, a little bit of breeze with it. It doesn't take many parts per million to be detectable by the human olfactory senses. But that level isn't necessarily harmful. So the folks that work in that environment, they deal with levels that if we walked in, even I, and I did many years on the hazmat team previously, you know, we wouldn't stay in that environment, not even for a few minutes, without having proper monitoring to say that it was safe. But to them, it's just kind of, you know, everyday operations and maintenance. You get little leaks around valves, you're in close proximity. So, I mean, the odor of it is extremely unpleasant. It can be extremely hazardous as a material. It can explode, it can burn, all those things, even though it doesn't really list it that way. But it is definitely no different than any other hazardous materials that we have around us that we need for everyday operations and things that we do in industry and life. It's something that we have to live with. But for us, if it's significant enough of a leak, there is going to be emergency notifications out to the community. And I know within their own plans, they have their steps that they must take in notifying us. We're the first call that they make, and then it's up to us to make the rest of the calls to the neighborhood, to the community, when there's a leak of significance that poses that threat. And as of thus far, we haven't had that, fortunately, and hopefully we won't, and good maintenance practices by them typically help prevent those things.
If I could, just following up, and again, Nick Osgood or Todd could weigh in on this, but the concern is what people are aware and educated to. The unknowns of the potential for having a leak like this in their backyard, in their immediate neighborhood, is a source of concern and anxiety. And there's not a sense that they've been properly communicated with and to in terms of what that risk is and what the company's protocols are, and a satisfaction that the education has gone out so they understand what's happening and how it might impact them, rather than just simply smelling something and panicking.
Right. Yes, certainly, and we have no objection to doing further education with the community on that in conjunction with the company and trying to get that information out there so people are educated to what it is, what the hazards are, so they can have at least a better understanding of what the risks are, what the responses do, and when they should get those notifications. You know, otherwise, it's, we kind of take it for granted because we live with it, I guess, every day, but I'm not living right next to it and having to, you know, be as concerned as the folks that are right next door. So I completely understand your concerns and their concerns, and whatever we can do to help with the company to get the word out and do some education for the community, we're happy to do.
Counselor Hekt.
Chief, I was just wondering about the transportation of ammonia through Gloucester to get to the plant, and do these transportation companies also require inspections and permits and that sort of thing?
Yeah, they do. That's all federally regulated, as well as through the state and the licensing, both for the operators that are driving the vehicles have to be qualified, you know, with their CDLs and hazmat qualifications. The vehicles are inspected routinely, and their maintenance records are inspected. So that isn't something, again, that happens at our level. That's at the next level up with the state, and I believe even MSP is probably involved to some degree. I know they were in Michigan. So, you know, the difference is how each state handles those types of things is a tier above me. That's more of a transportation issue than for us. The routing of those vehicles is actually something that the Cape Town Emergency Planning Team has got a small grant that we're working on right now to kind of better understand those routes of all the hazardous materials through Cape Town, so we can kind of dictate the routes and change them if we feel it's appropriate. So there's work being done on that as well.
Thank you.
Counselor Gilman.
I'd like to ask through the chair that Mr. Provost comes up. I have a couple of brief questions. Mr. Provost, if you could speak loudly into the microphone, it would help us all out. Thank you. Thank you. So my questions to you, seeing that we do now have a petition that neighbors have signed, is I just want to ask you a few additional questions that we didn't cover in standing committee. My first question is, can you explain a little bit more what the ammonia is used for in your facility? I understand that you've been using it since 1969, but if you could just explain that, and then I have a follow-up question.
The ammonia is a key component to the refrigeration, oops, sorry. Ammonia is a key component to the refrigeration, and without the ammonia, you don't get refrigeration. So it's the transfer of cold or the transfer of heat, pulling heat out, allowing the cold to, I'm not technical with this, so, but in any event, it's a key component of the refrigeration. So with that, we have a cold storage facility where the ammonia moves throughout the system, and as it moves back in, it draws heat and brings it back out of the cold storage facility, keeping those temperatures down. It does the same thing at the end of the fish line, at the end of the processing line, where we have spiral freezers, and those spiral freezers, the temperature is significantly drawn down through the circulation of that ammonia. With the circulation of the ammonia, it brings the temperature down, the seafood comes off, the processing line goes through that spiral, gets packed, and then goes into the storage facility. So the ammonia is required for both freezing at the end of the line and also maintaining the temperatures in the cold storage facility.
Thank you. And my follow-up question is, we've heard what happens when a leak occurs from the fire chief. I'd like to have you maybe explain a little bit more in terms of how your own employees are trained in terms of handling this hazard. I mean, is there MSDS training? I mean, can you elaborate a little bit and tell us more in terms of what you do internally to prevent leaks in terms of education for your own employees?
I'm going to bring up Silvio Albano to talk more about that. He's the engineer that's on hands with the plant, and have put together most of the plans relative to anything associated with the ammonia, whether it be an evacuation, a leak mitigation, and those type of things. So if you don't mind, there we go. Silvio?
To the chair.
I'm Silvio Albano, I'm the plant engineer. I think your question was referred to training personnel? Silvio Albano, A-L-B-A-N-O. National Fish. Plant engineer.
Yes, to answer your question, my question is, if you could just explain a little bit in terms of how you train your own employees in terms of handling ammonia, other chemicals, just so we have an understanding of what you're doing internally, and also to make sure that leaks don't occur.
We've put together an evacuation plan. It starts with a incident commander. If there's an incident, he takes over, and there's levels of parts per million of ammonia that we do different things at. Okay? So the first thing that happens, I think he was talking about a leak that happened some time ago, that was actually detected by a mechanic who smelled it. Our sensor didn't even, it was such a small leak that the sensors didn't even detect it, but we did smell some ammonia in the room. We were looking for that leak, and the processor looking for the leak, a pipe got cut, and that's when more ammonia came out. Although we had already emptied the system out of ammonia, there was still some in the system. When that happens, at 25 parts per million, an alarm goes off. That goes to the alarm company. The alarm company calls us and says, "You guys have a leak." At that time, we go looking for it, okay? If the level gets higher, if it goes to 55 parts per million, the alarm goes off again, but it automatically goes to the fire department, and we automatically evacuate the building. So a blue light goes off, an alarm goes off in the building at 55 parts per million, the building gets evacuated, and the fire department is alerted. At that time, we have different people in place. We have a rescue team, a search team that goes from floor to floor, make sure that everybody's out of the building. We have a county, a team that accounts for all personnel. Once they're marshaled outside, we make sure that everybody's accounted within in the building. We keep a signing roster of people coming in and going from the plant so we know who's in the plant. We can go for all those people. We then have an ammonia team that's trained to don masks, and they have detectors for levels, and they're trained to go in with masks on. If it goes higher than 55 parts per minute, nobody goes in the building until the fire department shows up. When the fire department shows up, it's their response. They take over from there. We back off, and they direct the operation. We also have a communication person that communicates with the office, makes sure the fire department, they get called, and we also have a security guard that, at the gate, makes sure that nobody can come in while the emergency's on and allows the room for the fire department to be able to come into the plant. So that's the thing we've put together in case of an ammonia emergency.
Do you have MSDS training on the chemicals?
Yeah, we have mask training. There's four mechanics or four maintenance personnel that are trained donning the mask. They fit it every year to make sure the mask is working properly, the filters are changed, and so they're trained to wear the mask. Four people are responsible for that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Counselor O'Hara.
Thank you. I was wondering if Mr. Osgood could, you gentlemen could stay here. Mr. Osgood, could you also?
They want us to stay here.
Oh, okay. You're the owner of the plant.
Correct.
National Fish is your tenant.
Correct.
Correct. Thank you. To make possibly Mr. Faity and Mr. Ayakono at ease, you've reviewed their entire process.
Oh, yeah.
You've obviously been new to the facility as of December 27th, I believe. And you've met with myself and Counselor Memhard. I've been through the plant. You have been proactive in replacing motor, motor bases.
We have.
Obviously, motor bases make noise. Ammonia kills people. You can assure us, your neighbors, that your system is up to 100% speed?
I can assure you that, yeah. We evaluate every piece of equipment we have. I mean, we've gone through this a number of times, just like with the sound, to get the sound down. We just swapped out the motors. We're going through the entire facility, soup to nuts. If we think there's something that's, you know, dated, it's time to go, it's on the agenda. Is it a three-month, six-month, nine-month replacement? It's preventative maintenance. It's, you know, that's what you want to do. It's a procedure that, as an owner, that's what I would, I require, actually. I mean, it's state requirement, it's how we manage. We've got a good team going here.
Understood.
You know? So as far as I'm concerned, the facility is in...
No. Again, I'm just trying to feel, make Mr. Faity and the neighbors, we can answer these questions, clarify, because, again, we have been at your plant. I've seen it firsthand. You've done things that the prior owner unfortunately neglected.
True.
So I'm comfortable that you're being proactive. It's obviously the neighbors that have to sleep at night, enjoy their lives in the neighborhood with your plant. So as long as you can assure us that you'll continue to provide that service that you have done thus far, I'm sure it'll make everyone's lives a lot easier.
We will. We're conscientious owners, we work with the community.
Thank you.
And we'll continue to do so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor O'Hara. Anybody else? Chief Smith, I have one question. You guys can sit down. Thank you very much for your responsiveness. So, Chief Smith, this particular facility is not the only refrigeration facility we have in Gloucester that uses ammonia. Is that correct?
Correct. We've got three fairly large right here around the harbor and then several more up in Black Forest.
So their situation in terms of the mechanics of it and the safety of it and all that is not unique to them. It's unique, it's common to all of these, and your overall concern for the city is common to all of the...
It is. I mean, it's a hazardous material. It's at a significant quantity, and if it was to have a major release, it would be a significant hazard.
So the questions and comments tonight about this plant would apply to others as well as the educational component that counselors might be interested in. That would be something not just for this plant, but for all of the facilities that use ammonia.
Yeah, certainly. I mean, it's the same product used at the ice rink.
Great. Thank you. That's all I got. Counselor Memhard, one more?
Chief, before, maybe either you or, again, the folks from 157, could you just clarify the amount of ammonia that is typically stored on premises at a facility like this to support the refrigeration system?
Yeah, so this plant's got 9,032 pounds in total. That includes their, what's stored and what's in the piping, plumbing. They have to account for all of it. So that's the capacity that they have of record that I have on file. The other plants might have to pull the records to look at them. It all depends on, you know, what all their operation is as to how many pounds that they need on site to be able to pull heat out.
Could you just clarify that 9,032 pounds is a threshold that's below the threshold that's set by the federal regulators of the EPA, which is 10,000 pounds, which triggers a different set of review and controls?
Correct. It is, and that's, you know, typically what folks are going to stay below those maximums that creates you a whole nother layer of effort and work. So they're below that by almost 100 pounds, but, you know, it's close to the limit, but it's not to the limit. And they do fall under the, you know, Sarah Title II reporting, like I said, and they do comply with every bit of that, so.
Any other technical questions from counselors? Pardon me? Okay.
Silvio or anybody else from National Fish? Todd, could you just clarify who the company relies upon for outside technical expertise in managing an ammonia release or maintenance issues that exceed the capacity of your own in-house engineering department?
Can you repeat the questions?
Yes. You indicated that once certain thresholds are exceeded, that then you all vacate the premises. The fire department likewise also will not enter the premises if certain conditions are exceeded for a safety reason. At that point, to whom does National Fish and Seafood turn to for outside contracting expertise and support? Who is your outside contractor, and how do you bring them in on a situation like this to help you cope with an uncontrolled release or a situation that could potentially be hazardous to the neighborhood?
We work with American Refrigeration. American Refrigeration has been working in this facility for quite some time. They're extremely familiar with all the facilities in Gloucester, and we follow their guidance with what we do and how we manage, you know, all the mechanics, as well as how we manage any issues and remediation of any problems that may arise. Silvio, do you want to add to that?
Oh, that's the company, American Refrigeration is the company we've been dealing since I've been there for five years, and they've been there longer than five years. I'm sorry, did you? American Refrigeration is the company we use. They, as a matter of fact, they come in on a weekly basis for four hours to do routine maintenance and inspect things. So every week, they're there for four hours. We have, Nick has a contract with them.
So as the owner, you know, just as management and team, the contract is in our name with American Refrigeration, so we can see what's going on, so we get all the reports, so everything's online, so we can see it. They fire off reports of what they've done, what they're looking at going forward in management of the entire building infrastructure as it relates to cold storage. online, so we can see it. They fire off reports of what they've done, what they're looking at going forward in management of the entire building infrastructure as it relates to cold storage and ammonia and other products that we use on site.
Could you just clarify what the communication avenue is so that if there's an unforeseen release of chemicals, ammonia in this case, what is the protocol to get American Refrigeration on site and how do they work with your crew and then work with the neighborhood if the release exceeds the immediate neighborhood of the plant?
I'm not sure I understand your question, but every time we need to do something with ammonia, we call American Refrigeration. We just did some work on one of the coils. We called them in, emptied the coil out of all refrigeration. We worked on the coil, they came back and put the ammonia back in. So we don't mess around with ammonia at all. We always call American Refrigeration for that.
So as part of a leak and part of the process as you just described, American Refrigeration would be one of the calls that we would make?
It's part of the call, that's correct. They're our call when there was a leak, absolutely.
Yeah.
Good. Anybody else? Thank you, gentlemen. I appreciate the answers. No more council questions for technicalities. We will close the public hearing and call for the committee report. Councilor Gilman?
Thank you, Councilor. The Planning and Development Standing Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed to recommend that the city council grant a license under GCO Chapter 8, Fire Prevention and Protection Section 8-1. License for storing inflammables, MGL Chapter 148, Section 13 and 527, CMR 1 for storage of inflammables at 159 East Main Street, Assessor's Map 63, Lot 26. Owner, NSDJ Realty LLC, specifically to store ammonia, 9,730 pounds. Argon gas, 50 pounds in two cylinders. Cooking oils, 11,500 gallons. Two 5,000 gallon tanks and three 500 gallon tanks. An ISO move.
Moved and seconded. Any further council discussion? Councilor Holmgren?
When we discussed this in committee and since everyone has taken the time to answer these questions and concerns, I would like to say I am grateful that the process seems to be being followed much more closely by the new owner. I sympathize with the neighbors' concerns and I do want to clarify that this is a change of ownership. So it seems to me that this, these processes have been in place since the 1960s and I am grateful that the fire department is notified quickly if there is a problem and I'm happy that these problems are rectified quickly as well. So I'll be supporting this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Holmgren. Councilor LeBlanc?
Thank you. I'm going to support this also. I'd like to thank Mr. Osgood and his team for being diligent and taking care of these problems and, you know, moving forward. We have several of these facilities on the waterfront that have ammonia that are in residential neighborhoods and in recreational. Mr. Memard? So, you know, to, and, you know, I understand what the neighbors' concerns are with this being a hazardous material. I'm sure the ammonia is not the only hazardous material that is stored in the city of Gloucester. So, you know, for us to shut down a business and put people out of jobs and also what Mr. Osgood said, not only the people that work there, but other facilities that store their product in this facility, we wouldn't be doing our job as city councilors. You know, we sat up here last week with the budget and we were talking about other cities that bring in income and trying to, you know, beat these businesses up is not business-friendly as a city and as a city council. So as a ward counselor, I'm going to support this and I would like to, you know, extend, you know, my help and I'm sure the rest of the city councils, some of the city councils up here would like to help you guys in any possible way that we can to move forward as a business-friendly city council, hopefully, because I think we should be business-friendly. So I'm going to support this 100%.
Thank you. Councilor Cox?
I am also going to be supporting this. I don't have any evidence whatsoever that has been forward tonight that they are not in compliance in order to not receive this permit from us this evening. And that's where my legal aspect needs to be. I do sympathize with the neighbors as far as having this substance near them. I live downtown, so there are many facilities near my house that could affect me as well. And as far as education, you know, a lot of that can be found online or through the library, but I do want to offer my assistance with any neighborhood communication from the businesses as well. So, again, I have no reason to not vote for this this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Cox. Anybody else? Councilman Memard?
Just consistent with the remarks that my other councilors have made, I would like, again, to welcome the new owner group of Nick Osgood and NSDJ Realty to the facility that we're talking about. And I'm really extremely appreciative on behalf of the ward residents for the efforts that they are undertaking as new owners and their accessibility and their ability to communicate and respond, which is very, very welcome. Going forward, I just hope that as they develop the property into an economic engine within Gloucester on the harbor, that they continue to outreach to the neighbors and educate them about what their activities are so that any undue concerns are addressed in a reasonable, professional manner. And I will support this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Gilman, next.
I just want to also say that I'll be supporting this. And one of the things that I really liked was when Chief Smith mentioned his willingness to partner and continue working with, training with Mr. Osgood, Mr. Provost and Mr. Albano, because I think that in the spirit of teamwork and working together for the benefit of the community and the neighbors and communications is really important. So I will be supporting this and thank you all for coming and presenting.
Thank you. Councilor O'Hara, do you want to say something?
Yes, thank you. I just want to thank the owners and tenants and the neighbors for being here tonight to discuss this issue. It's a very serious issue. We've had issues that haven't been with favorable results decades ago where the fire department, I think, had some injuries. I want to thank the administration, the mayor, for working with the new owner in working to get the issues that the previous owner did not address. The new owners have been extremely proactive. It's a very large plant, obviously in a residential neighborhood. Again, Councilman Memard and I have met with Mr. Osgood. We've spoken to Mr. Osgood. He's assured us of what he has been doing. We've kept eyes on the plant as obviously the neighbors have been on a daily basis and things have improved. It's not going to happen overnight. Everything takes time, engineering and obviously money. I don't think money has been an object for the new owners to address the noise issue. This issue, obviously, I think is much more important and similar to the noise, I'm comfortable that Mr. Osgood and the tenant, National Fish, has been very proactive. We've been, I have been with them very early, very late, at night, early in the morning, outside, taking noise readings. I've been with them. They've gone up and down the neighborhood streets. I think they've taken it very serious and I'm sure you will continue to assure the neighborhood and the city that everything will be maintained and kept up to the highest standards. Our fire department under Chief Smith is very well-trained and they're ready 24/7 to respond, but they prefer not having to deal with, obviously, issues of leakage. So thank you very much for the continued upgrades to the plant. I will be supporting this and we, as a council, will continue to help the neighborhood live in peace and live together with a plant that supplies employment and taxes to our city. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilor O'Hara. Councilor Hekt?
I'd just like to also acknowledge that the fears of the butters are real and that this is, ammonia is a pretty intense substance. It's hazardous. I took great comfort in understanding that there's, every week, there's four hours of regular maintenance on the system. I think that's extraordinary, having been involved in the design and operation of numerous processes. And four hours per week regularly is very, it's a significant amount of regular maintenance. So I appreciate that. That helps me a lot in terms of voting positively for this.
Thank you, Councilor. Anybody else? So I'll just echo what everybody else said and we always appreciate businesses. It's not a new business, but it's a new ownership and we appreciate the way you've approached the issues, the noise and the, and this issue and partnership with the city. So I'll be supporting it as well. Having said that, this is a simple majority vote, so all those in favor, say aye. Aye opposed? Thank you. Madam Clerk, next order of business?
Next order is public hearing 2018-029 to amend the Gloucester Code of Ordinances, Chapter 22, Traffic in Motor Vehicles, Article 5, Division 3, Parking Meters, Section 22-218. Deposit of coin required overtime parking exemption by deleting subsection 22-18C regarding parking meter holidays.
And I will open the public hearing and ask if there's anyone to speak in favor of this motion. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Any communications?
There are none.
Any council questions regarding the technicalities of this? Seeing none, close the public hearing, call for the committee report. All righty. Councilor LeBlanc?
Yes. Ordinance, administration voted three in favor, zero opposed to recommend that the city council amend Gloucester Code of Ordinances, Chapter 22, Traffic in Motor Vehicles, Article 5, Division 3, Parking Meters, Section 22-218. Deposit of coins, coin required overtime parking exemption by deleting subsection 22-218, subsection C, as follows, notwithstanding any other provisions in Article 5, Division 3, no parking meter fees shall be due under subsection A, nor shall any penalty be imposed for failure to pay on days declared as parking meter holidays, which shall consist of Black Friday and Small Business Saturdays, dates around the Thanksgiving holiday, and that these parking meter holidays are also included in any sales tax holidays adopted by the Massachusetts State Legislature. An ISO move.
Moved and seconded. Any narrative behind this?
I'd like to call through the chair on Councilor Cox.
Councilor Cox?
So just some background on this. Previous council voted in favor of having these parking meter holidays for Main Street in particular, where the meters are. We did try it for a couple of years and the merchants through the DDC, the Downtown Development Commission, came forward and we discussed it and it was just not good for business because people would sit in a parking meter spot for the entire day and it just, you know, obviously not good for business. So through the, me being the liaison for the DDC, they asked me to bring this forward. We had been discussing it for a while and to remove this section. On a side note, this just applies to the meters. Through the administration, we did come to a compromise and say if the administration wanted to have a meter holiday, that the use of the city-owned lots off of Main Street surrounding downtown would be perfectly acceptable to the merchants, but not Main Street itself. So I think that is a very lovely compromise.
Yes, thank you very much. Any council comments or questions? Seems pretty straightforward. Simple majority. All those in favor, say aye. Aye, thank you. Madam Clerk, next order of business?
Next order of business is for council vote, the adoption of the FY19 budget.
Well, Councilor Cox?
Can I just say so moved and be done with it?
Yes, second.
Just joking. Can I ask for a two-minute recess while we shuffle the deck chairs here?
Sure. We're back. Councilor Cox? The final motions for the 2019 budget?
Thank you very much. I just have a few things that I wanted to say before we get on with the motions. I am pleased to present the recommendations of the budget.
I am pleased to present the recommendations of the Budget and Finance Committee for the city's budget for fiscal year 2019, which begins on July 1st, 2018. Overall spending in the general fund amounts to $110,952,000, of which $41,938,897 is set aside for the schools. While an estimated $111 million seems like a lot of money, keep in mind that we are a city of an estimated 30,000 people, covering 42 square miles with 60 miles of coastline. Between all city services and departments, we rely on over 1,400 skilled municipal employees, employee base to keep our city running smoothly. We extend our appreciation for the professional work by the mayor, by the mayor, by Mayor Taken's team, in particular, CAO Jim Distino, CFO Treasurer John Dunn, Fiscal Analyst Grace McCann, and our school committee and the school management team. This council appreciates our own staff's hard work in this process, City Auditor Kenny Costa, City Clerk Joanne Sinos, Assistant City Clerk Grace Cordier, and Clerk of Committees Dana Jorgensen. All city department heads carefully explained and defended their appropriation results or requests, first to the mayor's team and then to the Budget and Finance Committee, line by line, dollar by dollar. It is a careful deliberative process, making efforts at every step to be open, public, and accessible, respecting the needs of the city and the hard-earned financial support provided by our city's taxpayers. Our fiscal stewardship means that our independent auditors and Massachusetts Department of Revenue positive review and acceptance will result. The Budget and Finance Committee appreciates that this has been a very tough budget year for the mayor's office to bring into balance, due in part to grant revenue declining and significant debt service that remains. Our future city budgets will remain a challenge, in part due to the city's aging infrastructure, including roads, significant unfunded long-term liabilities that include OPEB, retiree health insurance of $169 million, and pension liability of $108 million. As reviewed and tightened by CAO Jim Distino, the department heads, and the mayor's team, this budget, with constraints of our contractual obligation, is already very lean and mean. A few procedural matters I would like to touch on. All councils, all motions to be put forward were voted by members of the Budget Finance Committee, Councilor Scott Memhard as vice chair, Councilor Ken Hecht, and myself. For each department, the amount of personnel services, ordinary maintenance, capital outlay, and any special transfers will be specified. In a single motion, as read by myself, with the exception of one department, I will motion the vote, Vice Chair and Budget and Finance, Councilor Scott Memhard, will second for the record, and upon the city council's vote, I will announce the results of each vote. The roll call, a roll call vote will be called if there are any dissenting votes. Moving on to our first motion. Budget and Finance voted unanimously to recommend that the City Council appropriate in the amount of $350,000 from General Fund Undesignated Fund Balance Free Cash Account, as noted, to Fund Balance Reserve for Special Purposes Account, as noted. The purpose of this appropriation from the General Fund Undesignated Fund Balance Free Cash is to reduce the fiscal year 2019 tax levy, and I so move.
Seconded. Moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
The Budget and Finance Committee voted unanimously to recommend that the City Council appropriate in the amount of $30,000 from Talbot Rank Enterprise Fund Undesignated Fund Balance Retain Earnings Free Cash Account, as noted, to Talbot Rank Enterprise Fund Fund Balance Reserve for Special Purposes Account, as noted. The purpose of this appropriation from Talbot Rank Enterprise Fund Retain Earnings Free Cash is to stabilize the Talbot Rank Enterprise Fund user fees for fiscal year 2019, and I so move.
And I so seconded. Moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye. Aye opposed?
Budget and Finance voted unanimously to recommend that the City Council approve the FY19 appropriation for the City Council, as follows. Personal Services: $103,500. Ordinary Maintenance: $4,500, for a total of $108,000, and I so move.
Seconded. Moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye. Aye opposed? Next.
The Budget and Finance Committee voted two in favor, one opposed, to recommend that the City Council approve the FY19 appropriations for the Executive Mayor's Office, as follows. Personal Services: $323,779. Ordinary Maintenance: $49,500, for a total of $373,279, and I so move.
Seconded. Moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye. Aye opposed? Opposed? Okay, then we'll have a roll call, please.
Councilor Cox?
Yes.
Oh, sorry. Councilor Gilman?
Yes.
Councilor Hecht?
No.
Councilor Hoagrim?
Yes.
Councilor LeBlanc?
Yes.
Councilor Lombard?
Yes.
Councilor Memhard?
Yes.
Councilor Nolan?
Yes.
Councilor O'Hara?
Yes.
The motion for personal services for Department 121, City Mayor's Report, passes on a vote of eight in favor, one opposed.
Thank you. Next.
Court of Order, I just want to make sure that it's, it's the total budget, not just personal services?
No. No.
So, since there was a dissenting vote, we need to vote each category individually.
Okay, so this is for ordinary maintenance, okay, on the Department 121 Mayor's Department. Councilor Cox?
Yes.
Councilor Gilman?
Yes.
Councilor Hecht?
No.
Councilor Hoagrim?
Yes.
Councilor LeBlanc?
Yes.
Councilor Lombard?
Yes.
Councilor Memhard?
Yes.
Councilor Nolan?
Yes.
Councilor O'Hara?
Yes.
Okay, motion for the ordinary maintenance for Department 121, the Mayor's Department, passes on a vote of eight in favor, one opposed.
Thank you. Next.
Budget and Finance voted two in favor, one opposed, to recommend that the City Council approve FY19 appropriations for the City Auditor, as follows. Personal Services: $318,679. Ordinary Maintenance: $75,978, for a total of $394,657, and I so move.
Seconded. Moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye. Aye opposed? Thank you.
Budget and Finance recommends that the City Council approve, sorry, Budget and Finance voted unanimously to recommend that the City Council approve FY19 appropriations for purchasing, as follows. Personal Services: $158,961. Ordinary Maintenance: $181,449, for a total of $340,410, and I so move.
Seconded. Moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye. Aye opposed? Next.
Budget and Finance voted unanimously to recommend that the City Council approve FY19 appropriations for the Assessor's Office, as follows. Personal Services: $416,490. Ordinary Maintenance: $43,973, for a total of $460,463, and I so move.
Seconded. Moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye. Aye opposed? Thank you.
Budget and Finance voted unanimously to recommend that the City Council approve FY19 appropriations for the Treasurer Collector, as follows. Personal Services: $648,542. Ordinary Maintenance: $284,375. Capital Outlay: $2,000. Debt Service: $45,900, for a total of $980,817, and I so move.
Seconded. Moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye. Aye opposed? Next.
Budget and Finance voted unanimously to recommend the City Council approve FY19 appropriations for law, as follows. Personal Services: $254,426. Ordinary Maintenance: $105,000, for a total of $359,426, and I so move.
Seconded. Moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye. Aye opposed? Next.
Budget and Finance voted unanimously to recommend the City Council approve FY19 appropriations for personnel human resources, as follows. Personal Services: $310,852. Ordinary Maintenance: $49,290, total of $360,142, and I so move.
Seconded. Moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye. Aye opposed? Next.
Budget and Finance voted unanimously to recommend the City Council approve FY19 appropriations for management information systems, as follows. Personal Services: $355,969. Ordinary Maintenance: $635,464. Capital Outlay: $35,000, for a total of $1,026,433, and I so move.
Seconded. Moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye. Aye opposed? Next.
Budget and Finance voted two in favor, one opposed, to recommend that the City Council approve FY19 appropriations for the City Clerk, as follows. Personal Services: $290,149. Ordinary Maintenance: $6,300, for a total of $296,449, and I so move.
Seconded. Moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye. Aye opposed? One opposed? We'll have a roll call, please, for both, one at a time.
For Personal Services, Department 161, for the City Clerk's Office. Councilor Cox?
Yes.
Councilor Gilman?
Yes.
Councilor Hecht?
Yes.
Councilor LeBlanc?
Yes.
Councilor Lombard?
Yes.
Councilor Memhard?
Yes.
Councilor Nolan?
Yes.
Councilor O'Hara?
Yes.
Motion for the Department 161, City Clerk, Personal Services, passes on a vote of eight in favor, one opposed.
Thank you. Next, ordinary maintenance?
Ordinary maintenance for the City Clerk's Office, Department 161. Councilor Cox?
Yes.
Councilor Gilman?
Yes.
Councilor Hecht?
No.
Councilor Hoagrim?
Yes.
Councilor LeBlanc?
Yes.
Councilor Lombard?
Yes.
Councilor Memhard?
Yes.
Councilor Nolan?
Yes.
Councilor O'Hara?
Yes.
The motion for Department 161, Ordinary Maintenance, for the City Clerk's Office, passes on a vote of eight in favor, one opposed.
Thank you. Next, Councilor Cox?
Budget and Finance voted unanimously to recommend the City Council approve FY19 appropriation for registration, as follows. Personal Services: $59,461. Ordinary Maintenance: $48,914, for a total of $108,375, and I so move.
Seconded. Moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye. Aye opposed? Thank you.
Budget and Finance voted unanimously to recommend the City Council approve FY19 appropriations for Conservation Commission, as follows. Personal Services: $81,814. Ordinary Maintenance: $3,000, for a total of $84,814, and I so move.
Seconded. Moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye. Aye opposed? Next.
Budget and Finance voted unanimously to recommend the City Council approve FY19 appropriations for community development, as follows. Personal Services: $496,729. Ordinary Maintenance: $63,589, for a total of $560,318, and I so move.
Seconded. Moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye. Aye opposed? Next.
Budget and Finance Committee voted unanimously to recommend the City Council approve FY19 appropriations for police administration, as follows. Personnel Services: $383,77. Ordinary Maintenance: $58,483, for a total of $441,560, and I so move.
Seconded. Moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye. Aye opposed? Next.
Budget and Finance voted unanimously to recommend the City Council approve FY19 appropriation for police uniform, as follows. Personnel Services: $5,424,438. Ordinary Maintenance: $171,415. Capital Outlay: $113,005, for a total of $5,708,558, and I so move.
Correction, that's 858.
858. Said that three times to my head.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye. Aye opposed? Next.
Budget and Finance voted unanimously to recommend that the City Council approve FY19 appropriations for police criminal investigation, as follows. Personal Services: $409,084. Ordinary Maintenance: $2,450, for a total of $411,534.
Seconded. Moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye. Aye opposed? Aye opposed, next.
Budget and finance committee voted unanimously to recommend the city council approve FY nineteen appropriation for police harbor as follows. Personal services: sixteen thousand nine seventy-three. Ordinary maintenance: thirteen thousand, for a total of twenty-nine thousand nine seventy-three, and I so move.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, next.
Budget and finance committee voted unanimously to recommend that the city council approve FY nineteen appropriations for police parking as follows. Personal services: seventy-five thousand nine forty-eight. Ordinary maintenance: four hundred dollars, for a total of seventy-six thousand three forty-eight, and I so move.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, next.
Budget and finance committee voted unanimously to recommend that the city council approve FY nineteen appropriations for fire prevention and suppression as follows. Personal services: eight million two hundred and fifty-three thousand five hundred and seven. Ordinary maintenance: six hundred and one thousand four sixty. Capital outlay: forty-three thousand, for a total of eight million eight hundred and ninety-seven thousand nine sixty-seven, and I so move.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, next.
Budget and finance voted unanimously to recommend the city council approve FY nineteen appropriation for inspectional services as follows. Personal services: five hundred and twenty-seven thousand seven fourteen. Ordinary maintenance: fourteen thousand three hundred and seventy. Capital outlay: two thousand, for a total of five hundred and forty-four thousand eighty-four, and I so move.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, next.
Budget and finance voted unanimously to recommend that the city council approve FY nineteen appropriation for fire emergency management as follows. Ordinary maintenance: fifty thousand two sixty-two. Capital outlay: two thousand five hundred, for a total of fifty-two thousand seven hundred and sixty-two, and I so move.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, next.
Budget and finance committee voted unanimously to recommend the city council approve FY nineteen appropriation for police animal control as follows. Personal services: one hundred and twelve thousand three ninety-two. Ordinary maintenance: eight thousand, for a total of one hundred and twenty thousand three ninety-two, and I so move.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, next.
Budget and finance voted unanimously to recommend the city council approve FY nineteen appropriation for shellfish control as follows. Personal services: seventy-four thousand six thirty-six. Ordinary maintenance: three thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars, for a total of seventy-eight thousand three eighty-six, and I so move.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, next.
So, the next department is DPW in general, and we have a declaration.
Under Mass General Law, Chapter two sixty-eight A, I wanted to clear that my brother works for the DPW, but it has no bearing on my financials, so I may vote on the budget.
Thank you, Councilor. Anybody else? Kate.
Budget and finance voted unanimously to recommend that the city council approve FY nineteen appropriations for DPW solid waste as follows. Personal services: twenty thousand. Ordinary maintenance: two million twenty-three thousand six hundred and fifty-two, for a total of two million forty-three thousand six hundred and fifty-two, and I so move.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, next.
Budget and finance voted unanimously to recommend the city council approve FY nineteen appropriations for DPW engineering as follows. Personal services: thirty-five thousand two forty-nine. Ordinary maintenance: nine thousand two hundred and ninety-five, for a total of forty-four thousand five forty-four, and I so move.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, next.
Budget and finance committee voted unanimously to recommend that the city council approve FY nineteen appropriation for DPW Public Works Administration as follows. Personal services: one hundred and nine thousand seven seventy-two. Ordinary maintenance: fifteen thousand nine hundred and sixty, for a total of one hundred and twenty-five thousand four sixty-two, and I so move.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in-
Six ninety. Did I not say that? Okay. Fifteen, ordinary maintenance: fifteen thousand nine, six ninety. Jesus. For a total of one hundred and twenty-five thousand four sixty-two. So that's exactly what I did.
Moved and seconded, okay, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, next.
Budget and finance voted unanimously to recommend the city council approve FY nineteen appropriations for DPW snow and ice as follows. Personal services: one hundred and forty-one thousand five hundred. Ordinary maintenance: five hundred and ninety thousand one hundred. Capital outlay: thirty-five thousand, for a total of seven, seven, sixty-six, six hundred, and I so move.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, next.
Budget and finance voted unanimously to recommend the city council approve FY nineteen appropriations for DPW public services as follows. Personal services: one million four hundred and twenty-five thousand three forty-three. Ordinary maintenance: three hundred and forty-five thousand fifty-five. Capital outlay: eighty thousand, for a total of one million eight hundred and fifty thousand three ninety-eight, and I so move.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, next.
Budget and finance committee voted unanimously to recommend that the city council approve FY nineteen appropriations for DPW facilities maintenance as follows. Personal services: two million two hundred and twenty-seven eight thirty-two. Ordinary maintenance: two million nine hundred and twenty-seven thousand one hundred and nine, for a total of five million one fifty-four nine forty-one, and I so move.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, next.
Budget and finance voted unanimously to recommend the city council approve the FY nineteen appropriations for DPW central services as follows. Personal services: one hundred and forty thousand twenty-four. Ordinary maintenance: eight hundred and fifty-five five fifty. Capital outlay: seven thousand twenty-five, for a total of one million two hundred thousand, no, two thousand five ninety-nine, and I so move.
And I so second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, next.
Budget and finance committee voted unanimously to the city council, to recommend to the city council to approve FY nineteen appropriation for boards, Board of Health. Personal services: four hundred and seventy-eight thousand nine sixty. Ordinary maintenance: ten thousand three nineteen, for a total of four hundred and eighty-nine thousand two seventy-nine, and I so move.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, next.
Budget and finance voted unanimously to recommend that the city council approve FY nineteen appropriations for the council on aging as follows. Personal services: one hundred and twenty-four thousand seven fifty-nine. Ordinary maintenance: six thousand two hundred and twenty-four, for a total of one hundred and thirty thousand nine eighty-three, and I so move.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, next.
Budget and finance voted unanimously to recommend that the city council approve the FY nineteen appropriation for veterans' benefits as follows. Personal services: one hundred and thirty thousand seven fifty. Ordinary maintenance: four hundred thousand one sixty-five, for a total of five hundred and thirty thousand nine fifteen, and I so move.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, next.
Budget and finance committee voted unanimously to recommend the city council approve FY nineteen appropriations for Tourism Commission as follows. Personal services: sixteen thousand five hundred. Ordinary maintenance: one hundred and twenty-four thousand four hundred and fifty, for a total of one hundred and forty thousand nine fifty, and I so move.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, next.
The next department is the library, and myself, I need to declare under Mass General Law, Chapter two sixty-eight A, that they, that I am a corporator of the Sawyer Free Library and have no financial interest, and therefore may vote on the library budget.
And likewise, I also would like to disclose that, under Chapter, Mass General Law, Chapter two sixty-eight A, I am a corporator of the Sawyer Free Library, but I have no financial interest, and therefore may vote on this library budget.
I would also like to disclose that, under Mass General Law, Chapter two sixty-eight A, that I am a corporator of the Sawyer Free Library, but I have no financial interest, and therefore I may vote on the library budget.
One more.
I also would like to declare under Mass General Law, two sixty-eight A, that I'm a corporator of the library, and I'm going to vote tonight on this.
All right, we, that's something for all of us to be proud of, so many councilors are corporators of the library.
All right.
Okay, Counsel Cox.
Budget and finance voted unanimously to recommend the city council approve FY nineteen appropriation for library administration as follows. Personal services: eight hundred and sixty-eight seven sixty-four. Ordinary maintenance: one thirty-six four oh eight, for a total of one million five thousand, five thousand one seventy-two. And I so move. And I, oh, sorry, I so move.
I so second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, next.
Budget and finance committee voted unanimously to recommend that the city council approve FY nineteen appropriations for debt services follows. Ordinary maintenance: eleven million eight hundred and forty thousand seven sixty-two, for the same total, and I so move.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, next.
Budget and finance voted unanimously to recommend that the city council approve FY nineteen appropriations for other state and county assessments as follows. Ordinary maintenance: two million three hundred and fifty-two thousand eight eighteen, for the same total, and I so move.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, next.
Budget and finance voted unanimously to recommend that the city council approve FY nineteen appropriations for health, life, and insurance as follows. Personal services: seven million seven hundred and fourteen thousand nine fifty-eight, for the same total, and I so move.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, next.
Budget and finance voted unanimously to recommend the city council approve FY nineteen appropriations for Medicare insurance as follows. Personal services: seven hundred and seven thousand nine seventy-four, for the same total, and I so move.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, next.
Budget and finance voted unanimously to recommend the city council approve FY nineteen appropriations for workers' compensation as follows. Personal services: three hundred and forty-nine thousand three hundred and two, for the same total, and I so move.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, next.
Budget and finance voted unanimously to recommend that the city council approve FY nineteen appropriation for unemployment compensation as follows. Personal services: fifty thousand, for the same total, and I so move.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, next.
Budget and finance committee voted unanimously to recommend the city council approve FY nineteen appropriation for pension, regular contributory, as follows. Personal services: eight million three hundred and twenty-six thousand five ninety-six, for the same total, and I so move.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, next.
Budget and finance voted unanimously to recommend that the city council accept FY nineteen appropriations for regional school for the North Shore Regional Vocational School as follows. Ordinary maintenance: one million seven hundred and sixty-five thousand seven hundred and three, for the same total, and I so move.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, next.
Budget and finance voted unanimously to recommend the city council approve FY nineteen appropriation for liability insurance as follows. Ordinary maintenance: six hundred and fifty thousand, for the same total, and I so move.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, next.
Budget and finance committee voted unanimously to recommend the city council to approve the FY nineteen other financing uses as follows. Transfer to other funds: one hundred and five thousand, for the same total, and I so move.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, next.
The next department is the School Department, and we have two declarations.
So, my wife works for the School Department, and under Mass General Law, two sixty-eight A, I will be voting for this tonight. We do not have a financial gain in this, and it's just a bottom line number.
Thank you.
I'd like to disclose that my sister is a employee of the Gloucester Schools, and under MGL, two sixty-eight A, this will not affect my vote.
Thank you, councilors.
Budget and finance voted unanimously to recommend the city council approve the FY nineteen School Department budget in the amount of forty-one million nine hundred and thirty-eight thousand eight ninety-seven, and I so move.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, great.
The total general fund appropriations so far is one hundred and ten million nine hundred and two nine fifty-two. The general fund revenues, budget and finance committee voted unanimously to recommend that the city council approve the total FY nineteen general fund revenue, including other financing sources, in the amount of one hundred and eleven million three hundred and two thousand nine fifty-two, and I so move.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, next.
Budget and finance voted unanimously to recommend that the city council approve the overlay reserved for abatement and exemptions in the amount of four hundred thousand dollars, and I so move.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, next.
We are moving on to the enterprise accounts. Budget and finance voted unanimously to recommend the city council approve the Community Preservation Fund fiscal nineteen revenues in the amount of six hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars, and I so move.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, next.
Budget and finance voted unanimously to recommend the city council approve the Community Preservation Fund FY nineteen expenditures in the amount of six hundred and eighty-one thousand as follows. Open space reserve: sixty-eight thousand one hundred. Community housing reserve: sixty-eight thousand one hundred. Historic preservation reserve: zero. Administration: thirty-four thousand fifty dollars. Debt service historic preservation: two hundred and two thousand four hundred. General remainder: three hundred and eight thousand three hundred and fifty, for a total of six eighty-one, six hundred and eighty-one thousand, and I so move.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, next.
The budget and finance committee voted unanimously to recommend the city council approve the FY nineteen water enterprise appropriation as follows. Personnel services: one million seven hundred and thirty-two thousand eight fifty-one. Ordinary maintenance: two million six hundred and ninety thousand three sixty-nine. Capital outlay: one hundred and eighty-five thousand two ninety-five. Debt service OFU: one million seven hundred and eighty thousand six sixty-nine, for a total of six million three hundred and eighty-nine thousand one eighty-four, and I so move.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, next.
The budget and finance committee voted unanimously to recommend that the city council approve FY nineteen water enterprise revenues as follows. Total revenue: six million three hundred and eighty-nine thousand one hundred and eighty-four, and I so move.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, next.
Budget and finance voted unanimously to recommend that the city council approve FY nineteen water rate of eight dollars and thirty cents per thousand gallons, for a twelve-month billing period effective July first, two thousand eighteen, retroactive to April first, two thousand eighteen, and I so move.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed.
No.
Okay, we'll have a roll call vote.
Are you seriously voting now? Okay.
It's my bubbling out moment.
Just on a side note, this is a forty-one cent or five point two three percent increase over FY eighteen water rate.
Call the roll, please.
Counsel Cox.
Yes.
Counsel Gilman.
Yes.
Counsel Heck.
Yes.
Counsel Hoegrom.
Yes.
Counsel LeBlanc.
No.
Counsel Lombard.
Yes.
Counsel Memhard.
Yes.
Counsel Nolan.
Yes.
Counsel O'Hara.
Yes.
The motion for the FY nineteen water rate of eight dollars and thirty cents passes on a vote of eight in favor, one opposed.
Thank you.
Moving forward, budget and finance voted unanimously to recommend the city council approve the FY nineteen sewer enterprise appropriation as follows. Personal services: one million six hundred and thirty-four thousand seven forty-seven. Ordinary maintenance: four million two hundred and eighty-five thousand one hundred and nine. Capital outlay: three hundred and thirteen thousand two forty-nine. Debt service OFU: one million nine hundred and twenty thousand two fifteen, for a total appropriation of eight million one hundred and fifty-three thousand three twenty, and I so move.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, next.
Budget and finance voted unanimously to recommend the city council approve FY nineteen sewer enterprise revenue as follows. Total revenue: eight million one hundred and fifty-three thousand three hundred and twenty, and I so move.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, next.
Budget and finance committee voted unanimously to recommend that the city council approve FY nineteen sewer rate of fourteen dollars and eighty-three cents per thousand gallons, for a twelve-month billing period effective July first, two thousand eighteen, retroactive to April first, two thousand eighteen, and I so move.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, want to oppose, we'll have a roll call, please.
Counsel Cox.
Yes.
Counsel Gilman.
Yes.
Counsel Heck.
Yes.
Counsel LeBlanc.
No.
Counsel Lombard.
Yes.
Counsel Memhard.
Yes.
Counsel Nolan.
Yes.
Counsel O'Hara.
Yes.
The motion for the FY nineteen sewer rate of fourteen dollars and eighty-three cents passes on a vote of eight in favor, one opposed.
Just a side note, this is thirty-three cents or two point two four percent increase over the FY eighteen sewer rate. Budget and finance committee voted unanimously to recommend the city council approve FY nineteen waterways enterprise appropriation as follows. Personal services: two hundred and sixty-one thousand three eighty-six. Ordinary maintenance: one hundred and sixty-three thousand three hundred and six. Capital outlay: fourteen thousand five hundred, for a total appropriation of four hundred and thirty-nine thousand one ninety-two, and I so move.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, next.
The budget and finance committee voted unanimously to recommend the city council approve the FY nineteen waterways enterprise revenues in the amount of four hundred and thirty-nine thousand one ninety-two, and I so move.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, next.
Budget and finance voted unanimously to recommend the city council approve FY nineteen Talbot Rank appropriation as follows. Personal services: one hundred and seventy-two thousand two ninety-seven. Ordinary maintenance: ninety-three thousand. Capital outlay: twenty-seven thousand eight hundred and fifty-five. Debt service OFU: thirty-nine thousand four sixty-three, for a total appropriation of three hundred and thirty-two thousand six hundred and fifteen, and I so move.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, next.
Budget and finance committee voted unanimously to recommend that the city council approve the total FY nineteen Talbot Rank enterprise revenue in the amount of three hundred and thirty-two thousand six fifteen, and I so move.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, next.
The next thing that we are going to be voting on are the revolving funds. Budget and finance committee voted unanimously to recommend that the city council continue acceptance of statute, Mass General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three E and a half, School Department Revenue Funds as specified. Revolving funds, sorry. What did I say? As specified.
Can we waive the reading of all the line items?
Waive the reading of the, the funds description and the spending limit.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, okay.
Budget and finance voted unanimously to recommend the city council authorize the city to establish revolving funds for certain city departments under Mass General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three E and a half, for the fiscal year beginning July first, two thousand eighteen, with the maximum amount that may be spent from each fund for the fiscal year as specified in the table below. Waive the reading of the table.
All those in favor for waiving, aye. All those in favor for waiving, aye. Okay, so then we'll vote on the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Thank you.
Budget and Finance voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend the City Council appropriate $1,147,883 for the FY19 operating costs of the Gloucester School Food Service Program, and $1,147,883 for estimated receipts from fees charged to users for the services provided by the Gloucester Food Service Program, in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53E. And I so move.
And I'd like to extend discussion on this. I didn't finitem into the night, but I guess I'll just second it.
Thank you.
All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed. That's it.
So, that would be the final motion of the evening, and I just, again, want to reiterate some closing remarks here. This year's FY19 budget demonstrates great fiscal discipline and tremendous progress that we have made over the year. This is a credit to the administration, and I want to thank the administration for the work they have done on developing a balanced budget. The reliance of one-time revenue sources, also known as free cash, to balance the budget has been greatly reduced from past budgets. I hope to continue this momentum in further, in future budgets, and eliminate one-time revenue sources altogether. The budget for the General Fund CPA and the four Enterprise Funds total approximately $127 million. That's a modest increase of 4 percent from the fiscal year '18 budget, which reflects mainly our increasing fixed costs, such as pension obligations and healthcare costs. Through the efforts of the Mayor's Office and the support of the City Council, the city has adopted a capital fund, capital plan, funding, and free cash distribution policy that sets aside 40 percent of free cash to the Capital Stabilization Fund and 20 percent to the Building Maintenance Stabilization Fund. There's approximately $2.6 million in the Capital Project Stabilization Fund that is available to fund capital items in Fiscal '19. There's also approximately $1.3 million in the Building Maintenance Stabilization Fund that is available to fund building maintenance items in Fiscal '19. These stabilization funds are a great insurance policy for an emergency, and it's also fiscally responsible and prudent. The budget represents a considerable effort on the part of the council, the administration, the school committee, and the auditor's office to ring value out of every taxpayer's dollar. I commend all of those who participated in this process for their long hours and careful attention to detail. I would especially like to thank the Clerk of Committee, Ms. Jorgensen, who has shared this long journey and provided us with support and good cheer, most of the time. Can't say all the time, but most of the time. There's a good majority there. So, that is it from Budget and Finance. For the rest of the year, I'm out. See you later.
I have, I have proposed a round of applause. Thank you, Counselor Cox.
I, I did hear that the administration is buying the first round at the Beaufort Hotel tomorrow night, because I'm just exhausted.
Okay. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
There, there's a cash bar set up, so just go and charge it at the Beaufort, and just tell them to bill the administration. No clothes. Okay, fine.
Madam Clerk, next item of business, please. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Jim. Thank you, John.
Next item of business is the update of the Fisheries Commission by Council Representative, Counselor Scott Memhard.
Counselor Memhard, do you have more to say tonight?
I have nothing to say, but I do want to update the council that the Gloucester Fisheries Commission is alive and well. We've just appointed a additional new member this evening, and we're busy collaborating through the efforts of the Mayor and Sal DiStefano, working with Snap Chefs, working with Gloucester Fresh, working with Sal DiStefano. Al Cottone is our Executive Director, and Mark Ring, our Chair, and we're getting ready now, already, for the 2019 Seafood Show in Boston, where Gloucester and Gloucester, the Port of Gloucester and Gloucester Fresh will be well represented as usual. So, that said, we look forward to hoping you can all join us. I know Counselor Heck has been a strong supporter of our marketing efforts, and we welcome Michael Orlando to the, to the commission.
Great. Thank you very much, Counselor. Next order of business, Madam Clerk is the, councilor's request, the mayor. So, Counselor Costa, do you have anything to, oh, I'm sorry. Counselor Memhard, we'll start down at your end.
I would just like to express my sincere appreciation, on behalf of the citizens of Gloucester, and I'm sure everybody here at this dais, for the, the efforts and the perseverance of our DPW Director, Mike Hale, and the able staff of, of the DPW, Phil Kukuru, and others, to rebuild the Good Harbor Beach Footbridge, which opened for public traffic Sunday afternoon, and it's a thing of beauty.
It is.
And we hope that the Magnolia Pier is right behind. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Counselor Nolan?
We had a great week around Magnolia, and in Ward Five in general, Concord Street Bridge, with the temporary repairs being made over Walker Creek. The DPW and the administration have come forward on a lot of projects we've been working on for about six months. We have a few more in the mix. We are looking forward to possibly having the pier report turned into us tomorrow to get out to the Magnolia Pier Advisory Committee. Dick Wilson, Lisa Nagalo will be coming in, Teddy Costa waiting anxiously to come up with some solutions to try to resolve this. And again, I want to thank the administration and the DPW for all their hard work in the past two weeks. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Cox?
I have one request of the mayor, and that would be to review the Beaufort Hotels special City Council permit. It's my understanding that they were to commit to an off-site parking lot, and it's come to my attention that that lot is no longer being used by the Beaufort, and has been leased to the Cape Town Marina. So, it was a condition of their permit that they have this off-site lot, and to not interfere with the neighborhood, nor the current city lots as much as possible. And if they do not lease or own that lot any longer for these purposes, that they need to identify their new lot that they are using for their off-site parking, as, again, it was a condition of their special City Council permit. As you all know, there's a little fiesta coming up later this month, but not this weekend, but next weekend, are the Ladies Sane Boat eliminations. I will be rowing in those eliminations, so I would love to see you guys down there. I believe it is on the 24th, and I will specify a time as soon as they set one. But I look forward to seeing you all down there, and I wish the very best to our school committee person, Melissa, who is getting married on the 19th. So, good luck, best wishes, and I will be crashing your party.
Thank you. Counselor Blank?
Nothing this evening. Thank you.